Happy Birthday, Mike. Flashbully.
Much better than I thought.
You look better than when I last saw you.
I already upped her.
That delivered, I think. She kinda scared me.
I heard you say something. I just couldn't respond. But thank you.
Yeah, when you get to a point where I am a pretty big one.
This is a good committee.
Fifty-four. Yeah, okay, that's right. But Gene, he's already sixty-one.
It's a good committee. We have people on there who know what needs to be done to make it big.
Have you talked about this cleaning part?
That we're taking first things first.
Paint is all. It's, uh, and it's cleaning.
The paint, like, what the...
I'm not, I'm not doing it that way.
I'll say it now.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I mean, I, I didn't know anybody knew who's doing it now. Because they spoke anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a code department report reflecting the time period from June 1 through June 30. Um, we had, just highlighting some of the items on the list here. We had forty-five code inspections, wrote twenty-eight permits. Seems like permitting and development starting to pick back up again in the city, so that's a good sign. Um, we had five new businesses open up and, uh, we had eight that had closed their, uh, business license out. Uh, at that time, we were still working on St. Hannah's Church and Greystone Church. St. Hannah's is almost completely done. They're already occupying the building for services. Just have a little bit to finish up on in Greystone. It's gonna have a grand opening in, in a week or two. Um, we continue receiving business license renewals and affidavits and related items on that. And continue processing paperwork for alcohol licenses and working with the city marshal on delinquent, uh, business licenses. Dolores attended a training class on the new fireworks law, so we should be ready to implement that next year. The marshal removed thirty-one signs from the roadway, wrote a hundred-and-twenty-one required repair cleanup orders. Uh, he investigated four tampering and theft cases and wrote three citations in that time period. If you have any questions about the balance of the report, I would like to...
My name.
I'm glad you, um, are working on, um, the fireworks law because, uh, there were fireworks close to where I live, but just too close for comfort. And so I'm glad you're working on that.
So a little over twelve and a quarter million kilowatt-hours. Uh, a cost of just over a million dollars, which is a little bit less than last year. Telecom, we're continually driving down that higher usage for those, uh, those overages. And I think we're actually getting some progress on that and getting those, uh, those people that are going outside the agreement, uh, straight. Points of interest, um, we can probably get that compression for, uh, twelve of the channels right now. Running on fourteen, uh, one, one-one-fourteen. We'll be implementing that next month. We also got word from HBO and Cinemax that they are changing the way they are transmitting their signal size. And it's gonna save us about eight thousand dollars to go ahead and transfer them to the box. Uh, we plan to wait till next year, but I can't leave that eight thousand dollars on the table. Spend that now and then next year do the same thing. So that's, that's probably where we're headed with that. Uh, we've met with Comcast, who does our ad insertion. We're gonna start doing ad insertions on the HDs. And they're gonna help us continue to start compressing these on down. By this time next year, I would hope to have all the channels compressed except a little twenty or twenty-two channel tier of analogs toward the bottom. We turned up two-ten gig circuits to P T six Marietta. We're only using small portions of those. And, uh, they are up and running. Uh, we've got one, one of them's up and running completely. The other one will be up and running by the end of the week. We, uh, got return from the vendors on our LED R F P. We're very happy to see the pricing. Came back, we're gonna spend this month, uh, doing our due diligence. These LED lights are not, you're, you're doing apples to apples, but it's sort of like a grain of smidgen. They're red delicious. Uh, they all have a little bit different something to them. And we're gonna see which one will be the cheapest over time. But I was very surprised at the pricing. The pricing we've, uh, seen and the money we have in this year's budget, we should be able to do around three-hundred-and-fifty units, which should do, um, most of our main corridor streets that are non-D O T streets, Church Street, Daniel, Davis, Madison, uh, Bree Love, streets like that. And that'll give us an idea for what we wanna do next year. Uh, wireless will launch off the tank starting Thursday. We'll start the install of that equipment Thursday morning. Hopefully be done sometime Friday. I mean, Daniel Street is moving along. Uh, they're about to get the right-of-way cleared to install that, um, power line to tie in the Bree Love. And the equipment is starting to be ordered for the Shark Rile project. And that's all I have. Do you have any question?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Oh, Mr. Thompson, what about Kings Ridge? Did it...
We got to start that. It was, it was, ended up being very local as what I hear about.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some highlights from the performance indicators. The internet customers have slowly increased over the past twelve months by eight percent. The mobile option sales tax number for June was one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred. Uh, July payment, we just received that within the last couple of days. It was a hundred-and-forty thousand. And, uh, our next payment will probably be a little bit lower with the sales tax holiday from this past weekend. Moving on to the financials. Uh, the main, main item to say there is most revenues are close to the mid-year fifty percent mark. And all three major funds, general fund, utilities, and solid waste, and overall, they have kept their expenses below fifty percent. And I'll take any question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department had a hundred-and-ninety-one calls for service for the month of June. Had another fire call. We had, uh, other hundred-and-ninety-two, hundred-and-thirty-two were E M As, uh, Mayas Assist, uh, those type, that type of calls. Conducted, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-one, uh, hours of training, getting eleven P R events. Uh, and, and at a later date, I wanna bring firefighter RJ Light up here. He's actually got a couple of recognitions. One from Matthews Tech for his work ethic. The other is from the Georgia Firefighters Association. That's the, uh, I believe it's what you call a Junior Fire Educator of the Year, which is a pretty big, pretty big thing. He'll be, uh, recognized down at Jackal Island at their summer conference in September. So, uh, in late September, so probably in September, I'll probably bring him for y'all to, uh, recognize him, uh, from myself and, uh, in front of y'all. Paying your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Move into police.
Police Department had four-three-hundred-and-three calls for service, which also includes area checks where the officers are actually out, dismanned, or not in a vehicle. Uh, four-hundred-and-four cases in court. Uh, ninety-seven training hours, had sixty-seven part-one crimes, one-hundred-and-seventy-three part-two. Hundred-and-thirty-three adult arrests, eleven juveniles, had ten, uh, P R events. Just a note on the, uh, shooting accident. Uh, we got one on two people. One of those people also gonna be involved in the armed robbery. Paying your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Sir.
Solid Waste. Thank you, Mayor. Our reports for June, um, our data's pretty much stable. We had a little, little bit of increase in the residential side and the solid waste side. Um, recycling, overall recycling times, a hundred-and-thirty-one times. Um, we placed sixty-six garbage carts, uh, fourteen recycle bins, collected around a little less than four tons of scrap tires. Uh, that's pretty much it. Ask any question if I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this report's for the month of June, highlighting a few areas on the admin side. We rented out community buildings three times. Uh, our fleet maintenance division completed a hundred-and-sixteen work orders in this time. The grounds crew's been wide open, uh, since the summer months, trying to maintain our local facilities as well as picking up, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty pounds of weed throughout the streets in the city. The street department, um, has done some, we're, we're, street repairs, a little bit over a half-mile ditch maintenance, three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet of new sidewalk, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty feet of stormwater pipe and repaired, did some patches on two other streets throughout the city. This next, uh, item there about our ins- inspection at the airport, uh, is, is dated. And we're, we're, we're waiting some results from the last inspection. Um, once we get those, we'll know what we're looking at there. I don't think we've got those in yet, have we, Matthew?
No.
Okay, so we're waiting on that. But we're very confident that we're gonna be in really good shape as far as the two-thousand-and-fifteen inspection went. Moving into the side of Marcus Division, completed twenty-seven work orders there and seventy-one in the building maintenance division. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Water, sewer, gas, and stormwater, Dr. Light.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in the water treatment side, we're, we're still averaging two-point-six billion a day. Uh, water distribution, uh, continue to see the high number of service calls. Uh, ninety-two service calls, twenty-five emergency, four-deep repairs. Uh, we had twelve new services installed for the month of June, which is, you see, that's the most we've had in one month in the last twelve months. So it was a good month for, for new services. Uh, the wastewater plant, I averaged one-point-one billion gallons. That's, that's gonna be due to, one, the, uh, continuing rehab efforts we've had on sewer, and also it's been really dry. So, uh, seeing some good numbers there. On down to the natural gas, uh, only sold eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine M C F of gas. And we did install seventeen-hundred-foot of, uh, new gas pipe in Oakland Ridge. And, uh, down to, uh, the training center, had a good month there with Baxter at fifty-seven attending. And we also, uh, we just reached another deal with them, a train of their wastewater operators. So we're adding to, continue adding to that number. And for two-thousand-and-thirteen C U B G, uh, we're about three weeks out from completing the project. Uh, they'll make their last burst in the morning and then they've got the pavement patching to do and, uh, the manhole rehabbing. So the project's winding down. Any questions? We'll be more after that.
No questions on that, but Mayor, I would just like to make a comment to the department heads. I know we don't make many comments on y'all's reports, but that's not a saying they're not really appreciated. And having these in advance and the ability to study and understand takes away a lot of questions we might have for you. So, so you guys know what you work you put into this is really appreciated. Thank you, boy.
All right, thank you, Dr. Light. Moving into our, into our department report, we'll move into many informations, uh, talking to the panel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of items on the agenda this evening. The first one being discussion approval, uh, for purchase of vehicles. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to, uh, request that we purchase six vehicles. Uh, these will be coming out of our C I P budget, or, excuse me, our C I P for the year. Um, and you can see which ones they are. Um, overall, we're, we're coming in about seven thousand dollars under budget. And that's including, uh, we're gonna go ahead and add the toolboxes and the bed liners, uh, just some of the, you know, accessories that need to be on the truck. So, you know, all that's still coming in at seven thousand dollars under budget. And that's gonna be, uh, four out of the general fund C I P and two out of the utility C I P. Courtesy Ford seem to be, uh, the cheapest of all, but two. Uh, state contract, which, uh, we get most of our stuff now from, uh, they're unavailable because late in the year. So we have to go with Courtesy Ford. But again, still seven thousand dollars under budget. And we'll be coming, uh, with some surplus vehicles, uh, once we get these in as well. I don't want to take any questions about the purchase of these six vehicles.
The, the only thing that we're talking about here is there's two different, two-fifties. Hidden there? No, I see. There's a one-fifty and that's only one two-fifty.
Two, two-fifty. No, that's a one-fifty, okay.
Should just be a two-fifty.
And the rest of them are one-fifty.
What is the forward transit connect?
That's coming out of public works. That's the van.
That's a long, short box utility vehicle that you see a lot of, um, heating and air companies using. A lot of repair companies, a little bit of building maintenance.
Yeah, it's gonna replace the...
Any other question? There are no calls for the motion, uh, move the motion.
I make the motion that we purchase the six vehicles as listed.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor to say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. Uh, we recommend that for the council, excuse me. Uh, second item is discussion approval for the City of Janitorial Services.
I'll take that one as well, Mr. Ed. We, uh, we recently, well, about thirty-three days ago, we posted an R F P, uh, for janitorial services. Currently, we pay about thirty-nine thousand dollars a year to have this building, public works, and the community building on Church Street cleaned. And, uh, when we posted the R F P, you know, there are about, I guess, five other facilities that we would like to include. Well, we were rather surprised when we got back the bids on eight facilities. The lowest bid, um, was thirty thousand dollars for eight facilities. And we're paying thirty-nine thousand now to clean three. So anyway, we're requesting that we, um, that we go, actually unfortunately, not with the lowest bid, but one that's about, uh, you know, two thousand dollars more. Um, Immigon Cleaning Services. And, uh, they came in for the first year at thirty-one thousand, four-sixty-three, sixty-four. Uh, second year being thirty-two thousand, uh, zero-ninety-two, ninety-one. Um, it's a two percent increase in year two, but still it's, it's still lower than the, the one they came in third. And that gets us eight buildings cleaned, um, for two years.
There is such a spread. Oh, yeah, it is lower.
How often do they clean, like, City Hall?
Uh, I don't have those specifics with me. Uh, Mr. Bailey, our purchasing agent, he sent out the, what, what's the...
It'll be Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the City Hall, one-on-one, two weeks, every other facility.
This is a present contract? Or we, it's a new beginning?
No, ma'am.
Janitorial services.
Well, we, we've been using someone, um, and we just, you know, it was time to bid it out again. Uh, we weren't really getting the service that we thought we were paying for.
Where is this company from?
It makes out of Waihonya, Georgia.
Waihonya, right.
And so I just clarify the reason why you're not recommending the low bids, because they haven't provided...
They had, they had two missing items. One was a, a business license, um, and the other one was the auto liability insurance coverage that...
And they won't provide the...
They said, they sent us the email actually this afternoon, or this morning, saying that they could provide that. So, you know, the gift of the next level.
I'm sure we checked in with other companies that use this plan as well.
City of McDonough, I believe, was a huge records form.
Muskogee County?
Yeah, Muskogee County, uh, Department of Driver Services. They all saying their praises fairly high, so...
Do they have to, uh, provide a performance bond? Uh, do we ask for bonds from them?
They're bonded, yeah. They're bonded, they're fully insured, so... And we actually wrote a fairly stringent R F P. Um, and to get this price back is, I mean, we're very pleased. You know, again, we're getting eight buildings cleaned for less than what we're paying at three now.
So, when they clean like this building, what kind of cleaning are they doing just three times a week? I mean, vacuuming?
Vacuuming and trash, uh, cleaning restrooms, uh, restocking supplies.
In the restroom?
In the restroom, stuff like that. Once a month, I believe they do, do the floor as far as like mop floors, stuff like that.
The, the daily activities, three times a week, are typically gonna be, you know, your trash or stuff, of course, dusting offices, vacuuming floors, sweeping, uh, shaking roads, things like that. Your, uh, monthly are gonna be, most of your horse on all edges, stuff like that, to keep some of your bigger items that are on your blinds, um, insides of windows.
Yeah, these are same things that are done once a week at the other location?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what they do here three times a week, they'll do in, picking up on here, public works, one time a week.
Yes.
And we enter into a two-year contract?
Two-year contract? We, we haven't rebid in years, as far as I know, so we're, we're just gonna...
Are there any provisions there with any notice or whatever if you find their services are not what you expected for...
We can give them thirty-day, thirty-day notice.
To terminate?
And of course, we, we'd give them thirty days to, you know, reconcile the problem, but...
But there is provision there, is, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we need the motion.
I'll make the motion with the chair that we, uh, recommend Immigon Cleaning Services at the latest quarter here, uh, to the full council next week for approval.
Okay, now the motion, now the second.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor to say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. We recommend... That concludes the finance committee's agenda for today.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear a word you're saying, so I'm not so, I don't make you, but, uh, I can't be able to...
You can move closer.
That's great, I'm welcome.
Okay, we'll move into the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Foster, would you like to come forward and give us a report, please?
Just, ma'am, appreciate it. Mayor, Council, thank you. Uh, dispatches Friday was a summer night for Delta seventy-three. If you look in the stack of photos that have been provided, the first photo really says the dollar. It says fuel farm and fuel truck. So, uh, taking some punch shorter files, a fuel test that has to be done prior to releasing the fuel for sale. We're gonna be pumping by this, by the end of business on Friday. Fuel's the first step. We're looking forward to ribbon cutting ceremonies, putting together right now, again, as far as September's kind of time of year. Um, so that will be, you'll be invited, obviously, to that. There are a couple of things that are coming up. Uh, first of all, on August twelfth, in the country, we have a normal commission meeting. And every one of the councils is told us about it, to, to meetings. However, on September ninth, if you want to see the future of Monroe Airport, we're gonna be having our holiday planning retreat. And we would encourage you to come and join us for that event. And we're gonna have our engineer here, there's gonna be plans laid out for the future of the airport. So I think it's very important to be, and I would like to see each one of you there, if possible. So, uh, I take, I'm glad to take any questions that you might have, but again, as always, thank you very much for your support.
So you'll send us a reminder on that September night?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that all for airport?
No, we have one purchase.
This is, uh, thank you, Scott. This is a purchase of the fuel that is, uh, that we'll hopefully be selling by Monday, um, or Friday, if all goes well. Um, we are, the, the original order, it was for eight thousand gallons. Um, but low bid here is Perry Brothers, and we bid it out, uh, three different companies, Perry Brothers, Aviation Fuels, uh, Eastern Aviation Fuels. And we tried to get it leveled through, you know, brown oil, Stevens Oil, uh, but they were unable to bid directly. Uh, so Perry Brothers provided us with a price of three-fifty-five per gallon, um, for a total of twenty-eight thousand four hundred. When they brought the eight thousand gallons, of course, you can only get, uh, around seventy-eight hundred gallons. We got seventy-eight fifty-eight, uh, for, at three-fifty-five a gallon, for a total of twenty-seven thousand eight ninety-five ninety. Um, I checked just some fuel prices today on Air Nav, on that website. Um, the cheapest we see so far is Gainesville, four dollars and twenty-three cents a gallon. Uh, next would be Jackson County at four forty-nine. So when this stuff goes on the market, uh, for sale on Friday and Monday, uh, we're probably gonna be the cheapest in the state. And, uh, we hope to see our air, full of airplanes, the skies full of airplanes, uh, this Friday and, uh, Monday, so...
This is the promotion of...
Well, we won't be selling for three-fifty-five a gallon. I, you know, we'll mark it, obviously mark it up, but, um, anyway, still though with the markup, we'll, we can advertise where the cheapest is. Anyway, my, so I'm asking for approval of that, uh, twenty-seven eight ninety-five ninety from Perry Brothers Aviation Fuels.
Thank you, Mayor. Now it's on the floor for a vote.
I'd make that motion, we approve of fuel purchase.
Second.
Has been motion in second for, to award this to Perry Brothers Aviation Fuels. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. And, uh, we will present this to the full council meeting next week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Public Works, you have any...
No, sir.
Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the approval, uh, discussion for the approval of a rubber track loader, Mr. Thompson or Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Blue. We have a capital budget item, uh, for a high-flowed skid steer to be used to clear right-of-way. Basically, this is a mulching bin attached to a high-flowed skid steer, and it's used to grind the, uh, underbrush and small trees in place. They're gonna have to cut them down, put them in the chipper, haul it off. We had budgeted eighty-five thousand for that product. And Mr. Middlebrooks rented this same device to use on his, uh, a project grant that he's been doing, a C U B G grant. And during that grant, he paid a total of forty-five thousand in rental for that device. The, uh, perimeter... seven hundred, uh, basically the, the leftover of what the, the, the unit is worth. And, uh, from its performance, when working on Mr. Middlebrooks' project, we, we surely think it's a, a good idea. It will actually save us forty-five thousand dollars, uh, from our, and our capital. Why not? If you have a question, I'll try to take it.
So, it was a new machine when it was rented?
Grind machine, outfitted with, uh, all the cooling stuff. What we found, if you're looking into this, is you, you really need all these cooling devices to cool the oil in these units, 'cause the oil gets real hot in these grinders, and this unit has everything we would have ever wanted.
Can we work on it ourselves or not?
Uh, Jim, I've worked on it already, not the unit, but the head, the, the grinding head that we own. But yes, we've only had one, 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 one issue with it since, and it was covered, it's covered in the warranty for that part.
How long should it last?
The loader itself, I would think, ten, fifteen years, or maybe even longer, but the.
Seven years from when we got it.
The one we got right now that we u, that we use for just mowing the, the reservoir and doing some work on the streets, it's right, it's seven years, and it looks like it's new.
Is this a sole source item?
Well, it's just because of the rental that we paid with the federal grant that allows us to go to this, with this vendor and save forty-five thousand.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the purchase, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
We'll recommend that to council. Thank you, Mayor, that's all we've got.
Our public safety?
Mayor, uh, public safety doesn't have any items tonight.
Economic development.
Ms. Crosby?
Thank you. Um, actually emailed, um, the minutes earlier to all of you today, but we had a lunch on July ninth that we hosted with, um, Jim Weiner, Focus Community Strategies, and they're a housing redevelopment ministry, actually, a nonprofit that's worked there with around Atlanta. Then we're here, we had a great community luncheon, good discussion, and, uh, I'd love you to review those, so have some hard copies with me, too, if you want to see that. But, um, it really helped us begin thinking about what can we do here in Monroe. We are in the process of applying for the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, to be able to participate, participate in the city with that program, um, and that's due, the application's due in September. Um, so, that's kind of part of us, just beginning to gather information and learn from others, and what can we do to improve the quality of life for our people. Um, also, in July, we had our downtown development authority annual retreat, which was very successful. We've updated our work plans and mission statement. Um, we'd be happy to share those with you after our board reviews them. This week at our monthly board meeting, and our summer interns finished out their program here, so they're gone. But their main project for downtown was to do the property inventory. I'm very pleased to have updated accurate data of every parcel in the downtown boundaries. It's a long, arduous task, collect all that, but we have, when we analyze that data, we'll have the accurate percentage of vacancies, the correct uses, not just zone, zoning, but how each parcel of building is used, the names of businesses, the total number of employees, and that's just gonna be great to put all that together. I can't wait to report that back to you when we finish evaluating all these, all the spreadsheets that came with that. Um, we've got a couple new businesses in downtown. Kate Pettis has now moved in and operating in, um, right along Broad Street, I'm sure you know that activity. Who's Your Girl Bakery is a wholesale baker that has taken a new spot on Deadland Avenue. Excited to see her moving in. Actually, another, another pregnant business owner in downtown, in Colorado. Um, and, uh, obviously, another activity on buildings, and we'll have more now soon with new businesses in downtown, so excited to see that activity. Also, wanted to let you all know that this was the centerfold part of the Walton Kelly Quality of Life magazine. This was our City of Monroe ad, kind of did everything. We had a separate run, printed these, and they're a little thicker paper. You need any of these to help tell people about all that we do as a city of our citizens. Um, we have, we have a bunch of these, and we can order them more. Just wanted you guys to have that. I'll leave some up here, you can grab them if you need, if you'd like to look at that. Um, and also, wanted you to know that if you haven't seen it yet, it's been up for about a month, two months now, but we updated the economic development page on the Monroe City website, and it has all of the details that someone would need to know if they were locating here, that industry or business. Um, so please look at that, give me any feedback, any other things you'd like to see there. But these two tools would be great for you guys to do as we were kind of communicating with the city. And then, lastly, our Convention and Visitors Bureau is gonna do an initiative to do, um, a publication to advertise Monroe as a wedding and events destination. We already are, we had over a hundred and thirty weddings in two thousand fourteen. In Monroe, then you were scheduled now to have almost two hundred in two thousand fifteen, and the average wedding costing about thirty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money from outside of, of, most of it's outside of Monroe coming into Monroe. So, we wanna kind of pull together all those vendors, all those businesses, do a group advertising effort, and, um, we're excited to do that, and think it'll go a long way to increase in materialism dollars that come into our town. So, I have a flyer that we're using to announce that project to local businesses. So, I want to put both of these just right here, and just grab them at the end if you're interested. Um, be happy to answer any of those questions.
Can you clarify, you, the new bakery, you said it's a wholesale bakery?
It's a wholesale bakery, so it's not where you'd go in and buy a cinnamon roll. It's, they make cakes and sell them to other stores who sell cakes. So, if you went to Stripling, um, down Highway seventy-eight, you would be buying a Who's Your Girl cake from them.
So, this location is where they're doing the baking?
Yes, they're doing the everything there. Um, they turn out a lot of cakes. I'm sure they would sell you a cake if you walked in, but it's interesting business model. It's not dependent on foot traffic, it's, it's wholesale. Um, and that's a lot of our successful retail businesses have had that same model in downtown for very, the retail space is just kind of a bonus. They do most of their sales through, or wholesale.
Okay. Items, uh, discussions next week coming up. We have, uh, rezone the three oh nine Village Avenue, factory.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if I may, I'd like to combine the first three, A, B, and C there.
About what?
Um, they're all, they're all related to the same project, they just had to be applied for in separate, um, applications because they're separate parcels. But this is basically, um, rezoning those parcels to a planned residential district, uh, and it's in the Davis Street, Village and Colley Street areas of, um, Monroe, which seems to be really growing and revitalizing well over there. Um, it's, uh, Open Wells LLC, which is actually Ms. Crosby's husband and her, um, business, and they're gonna be redeveloping this property as a planned residential district with a little bit, um, smaller footprint as far as lot sizes and housing goes. So, that's what those rezones are related to. And, um, if you look through each one of those individuals, you'll see they're quite similar in the, the level of information that they have, and if you have any questions about what's listed there, I'd be glad to try and.
This is not for more apartments, is it?
No, these are single-family residential homes that are gonna be, but basically, what I need to plan residential districts is to be able to develop the, um, the smaller lot-size, smaller house, kind of cottage, um, development style. So, it's a little bit higher density, and, uh, that, that's basically it.
I know we'll have the public hearing on this next week.
That's correct.
And, and vote on this zoning, and, of course, everything's open to then, but just, uh, to review the materials that this company has already put out and what they're trying to do, and couple that with the talk that we had for the gentleman from Atlanta that came and talked about housing in, in towns like this. Uh, this is one of the more exciting things that I've seen in a long time, uh, that may be done here in the city. Very exciting.
Absolutely. Anything else on those three? All right, the, the, the last thing there, I, indeed, um, on the upcoming public hearings is a zoning variance at twenty-sixty West Spring Street. Uh, that's an address that did not exist until recently. It's an out parcel in front of the Walmart, uh, where they're going to be building a Burger King restaurant. And, uh, they're needing more parking than our current parking requirements allow. Uh, and we're basically asking for, they're basically asking for that variance in order to accommodate all their customers. Walmart's not terribly interested in cross-access agreements, so, um, even though their parking lot would be utilized, if we limited this one to a smaller size, they just wanna put their parking on their lot, and they're asking for the variance in order to accommodate their labor-intensive, um, business, because they have a lot more workers than most fast-serve restaurants, and, um, they wanna be able to accommodate their, their employees and the customer in all that parcel.
Pat, can you just explain why the zoning requirement is what it is today? You know, and, and I know you said they want it bigger 'cause they have more people, but why we have the zoning restriction we have today?
Oh, absolutely. Um, what, what we try to do when we reduce the amount of parking that is required, um, was to try and get rid of the giant asphalt footprints that big box stores and other places, um, have when they develop. So, basically, when, uh, these out parcels come in, they're helping us to achieve that goal. Um, it's gonna be a building rather than parking spaces, and, uh, we're, we're, we're netting a, a reduction in parking, even if we do grant this variance. But, but the goal is to try and keep the massive expanses of asphalt that are so unattractive when you're driving down thoroughfares, um, keep them down to a minimum.
But this particular one, if we approve expanding the number of parking spaces, it actually nets out to a reduction in parking spaces in.
Yes, sir, because it's a twenty-eight hundred square foot building. That's gonna be taking a parking in one.
Thank you.
So, there'll be additional paving that goes with this building, or are there, there won't be additional?
No, they're going, they're going in a spot that is completely impervious surface now, so.
Yeah, so no additional paving?
Replacing the asphalt with a rooftop, same impervious surface.
Yeah.
Any more questions on the West Spring Street zoning variance? Okay, we might want to move on.
Ma'am, can I ask a question?
Uh, no, ma'am, this is not a question. Uh, application for beer and wine on premises consumption, the Cotton Cafe, uh, also Milo's Restaurant, uh, application for beer and wine package sales at Max and Food Mart, and application for beer and wine package sales at Short Stop. Item six, a big discussion of the Miller Drake, I'll let Matthew speak on that for just a minute.
Uh, we're still, uh, getting info from the county, so we'll discuss this next week. Preliminary indications indicate we're gonna, again, for the second year in a row, have a, a tax decrease, so we'll be lowering the Miller Drake, um, which, again, is just obviously good, but it's just a testament to, um, staff and, and the, the job the staff does to keep the spending period. But also, the, the good economic times, um, that I believe are coming, so we're seeing, we're seeing some, uh, sales tax come back, uh, you know, properties increasing value. So, again, that's gonna allow us to, to lower the rate. We'll, we'll have, hopefully, final data, uh, next week.
Okay, uh, with no other business, we need a motion to adjourn to the second session.
So moved.
Motion, Scott.
Sure.
About five minutes left, and we'll be back in a minute.
Is that Kenneth Norman's property right there?